It's 5:30 and we're going to call this city council meeting to order. Let the record show that Councilmember Cobb and Councilmember Boyd is here. They're just not at the dais. Is Councilmember Adams still on? And we also have Councilmember Adams. So all councilmembers are present. We will have invocation by Mr. Don Smith and we will have the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Boyd.
Let's please stand and bow our heads.
Lord, thank you for all you do for us. We owe you so much. The city election is over. The people have spoken. Now the city council faces budget issues, scheduling issues, and other important projects. Lord, guide the council as it does this important work in a manner that Jesus would expect. Lord, the rest of us need to get behind the council and our city government and treat each other the way Jesus treats us. It appears we are treating each other better, focusing on the problem and not attacking People should not be part of the problem. They should be what? They should be part of the solution. This is what Jesus would expect. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Yes, motion to approve. You have to raise your hand. It doesn't work. Councilmember Boyd.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
The motion was by Councilmember Boyd and second by Councilmember Solomon. We have to raise up our hands if you want to vote or say something because the system is just not working.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Councilmember, okay, motion carries. We will now have a citizen comments. You have four minutes. Micah Ferrino.
Since the invocation was on the agenda, the people did not speak with only barely 3% of this town voting. People have not spoken. They barely mumbled. When it comes to people being part of the solution, we offer solutions and we're often shouted down, shut down, restricted. And that's why you live in mortal fear of speaking on anything other than what you put on the agenda. So don't hand me any of that crap about the people have spoken. And on the agenda as well for the invocation, could we for once maybe, as a celebration of diversity, have an invite? Everybody in this town know that we have a Buddhist monastery just down the road, 195. Maybe a rabbi, anything other than the same old folks coming in here preaching a sermon for once? Now, with regard to item number six, with regard to the pharmaceuticals benefits and Blue Cross, Blue Shield, et cetera, et cetera, I have brought this up on more than one occasion. Would it not make sense, if it's not already in there, can we back engineer it into there where those who are in police force, fire EMS, and solid waste, and maybe even with regard to code enforcement, where they got to get around some pretty nasty stuff? There is treatment called PREP, pre-exposure prophylactics, or prophylaxis, sorry, which is medication that prevents up to 99% of HIV bonding to a person's blood cells. Ounce of prevention as opposed to a pound of cure, okay? There is PEP, which is post-exposure prophylactics, or prophylaxis, I may have problems with that word, whereas the medication, as advertised, okay, can take effect, I did a little bit of reading on this, I'm not claiming to be a subject matter expert on it, but it can have positive effect within seven, as early as seven days, but usually within 30 days. Police officers, anybody who's going to be exposed to needles, anything, any of the trash drivers that have to get into the back of the trucks, get stuck by who knows what, when or where, wouldn't it be a sign that the city cares, a little thing like that, for PREP, look it up, where, have that peace of mind, where they have that protection on the front end, rather than hoping to go to Scott &amp; White and getting whatever medication cocktail, to hopefully flush out the one or two cells that, you know, could, down the road, cost them and the city and healthcare system as it is? I mean, it's a minor thing. It's a pill that taken once a day. VA offers it, but again, when it comes to the prescriptions, that also should go to shots, if we could get a definitive answer, if that sort of prophylaxis, prophylaxis for diseases, be it HIV, hepatitis, et cetera, et cetera, where employees are not having to pay out of pocket for their protection. They're out there for us, they go into situations not knowing what they're dealing with until well after the fact. I mean, it's a small concession. If it's in there, that's great, but if not, can we please take that precaution and show our city employees who are exposed to the worst that nature has to offer, that little bit of a peace of mind? That's not so much to ask.
Melissa Brown.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cobb has selected to speak.
Okay, Councilmember Cobb.
I really like that idea that Mr. Ferrino just presented in reference to PREP and the prophylactic, but I also want you to know that you can go to the Health Department. We should have it available and we should be able to help our city at any given time because we are partners with the Health Department and we do have it listed. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, that's all, that at any given time, you call and you do it. And I hope it is a part of our health services. That was good.
Melissa Brown.
I asked you a question last week. I didn't get an answer. I didn't wait a year to get it and still not have it answered. So I asked why the police department wasn't just going to go to KISD and get a modular building from them. And I depended on the council members to ask the question for me when the chief came up and they didn't. I did ask the chief though, and he did explain that it's because by the time KISD is finished with them, they are so run down that it would cost more to renovate them than to just build a brand-new one. So I appreciate staff taking time to answer questions. When it comes to the sanitary sewer evaluation survey, even though this says phase one, as far as anything I can see in the agreement, this is a 10-year agreement. It breaks down each year what phases they'll be doing, what the priorities are, and this all goes into the cost, but it is not $600,000 for the 10 years. It's $600,000 each year. And then the repairs to go afterwards, according to the answers I got from staff, and I did check with them just to make sure. So if anyone's interested in the agreement, you can go see where the priority basins are, what years they'll be done in, exactly what's going to be done as part of it. My only real concern, besides the fact that we're signing a 10-year agreement, not a 1-year agreement, so we're signing $6 million over right now, is legislative actions, which is an Article IV subsection F. So if in the event of legislative actions after the effective date, by any level of government imposes taxes, fees, or costs other than what's already included in this compensation package, then the city is responsible for paying it as a reimbursable cost to the engineers. So we do have that to look at. And then I have a question, and I would have brought all this up last week, but I didn't get an extra minute, so. Considering the airport pump station, according to the staff report, this is being paid out of the 2020 water and sewer bond. That was approximately $22 million bond that was supposed to pay for an elevated storage tank pump station, the water and wastewater improvements down Chaparral to connect all of those at Turnbull Ranch to the Chaparral water treatment plant that we have, and then North Colleen Waterline Rehab, which was supposed to go through North Colleen and improve undersized water lines. The question is, if we're this far out and we have $1.2 million left on that bond, what projects didn't get done, or which projects came in $1.2 million under budget since 2020 when all we have heard since 2020 is that every single cost to the city is increasing? So, I'm sorry, I'd just like to know where that money came from then, where we didn't do a project? Did we have North Colleen water lines not get improved? Did we have North Colleen water lines that were not improved out of this bond like they were supposed to be according to, oh, wait, according to five-year CIP plan? Or did we come in so far under cost and we had this money left over? I would appreciate answers to at least some of those questions tonight. Thank you.
Sean Price. You have four minutes.
Just so I have it open at the right page, and I know what it is, and I'm reading, since we now have fact-checking going on in the citizenry by KDH, when we come up here and speak, we get fact-checked in the newspaper. So got to make sure I have my facts correct when I speak tonight. I'm sure that they didn't come from the city council for that to happen, but I'm doubtful. So when I look at all of this and I go through everything, I know that some of the money that's being spent was already allocated earlier this year, but the total of today's is roughly around just under $19 million, right? With RS 24-093, we want to spend 14 million, over almost $15 million for the Blue Shield Blue Cross, right, an organization that discriminates against whites and supports transgenderism for teenage kids and prepubescent children, so they chop off body parts and they advocate for it. We're going to give an allocation that our employees can buy insurance for 35 dollars to $793 per individual with a city support of 123.46 from the city, right? But we're overall buying it for $7,457,66 for one year, and then we're going to increase that by $140,776 the next year. So this year, you know, so we're roughly buying $14 million worth of Blue Shield Blue Cross right now. On RS 24-094, what's the square footage that's going to be paid for? It's not disclosed in the presentation. So I don't know how to do the math on that when we're supposed to be for 300 months getting, you know, certain percentage per square foot. It's not indicated in the presentation, so that's a question there that could be answered. On 24-095, right, how many flights will be increased by this, you know, by American Airlines? How many more flights? Because I think we only have two a day. I may be wrong with that, but from what I count when I watch the skies, it's two a day that land in Colleen Airport. I don't know about Skylark, so I'm just wondering what the increase will be. And 24-096, the change order is increasing $330,585.16 to the already $5,335.19.32 with another additional 9.76% increase. So I'm just wondering why we're getting all these increases on all these things that we've already spent money on. And to 24-097, the $96,800. This is, is this part of the change order, or is this just additional work that has to be done? And it goes on, and 098, $178,764.20 buying this building. You can get a cheaper building. It's easier done because you can get for $86,169 for the golf course, for a control panel. I found one by Rayburg for $16,000 for 54 stations. So there are options out there that are being looked at.
Your time is up.
By the way, the debt for the city is $194 million.
Your time is up. Thank you. Cameron Cochran. You have four minutes. Sir, that's your first one.
What? I just said, don't be so mad.
Please take your seat.
Don't be so mad.
Mr. Cameron, please come up, sir. You have four minutes.
On behalf of my friends, family, and others, I would like to say Happy Gay Pride Month. I see we still do not have a proclamation out there, so I'd like to make that verbal announcement.
Sir, that is not on the agenda. That's your first one. Stay on the agenda.
So, we talked religion earlier, right?
Stay on the agenda.
So I'm a religious man who prays every night. The question was asked, what would Jesus think? I think he'd be saddened by the city council. Let's talk about investments. RS 24-92, the newspaper last year in Brown, the August 23rd, August 23 timeframe, said that the city manager forgot to collect developer fees, inspection fees. We're not sure how much money was lost, but those developer fees, no one was fired or held accountable. Again, the newspaper reported that the water authorities overcharged the city for 17 years. Somehow that money, estimated $288,000 must evaporate because there's no accountability of what happened to that money and where it's going to be spent. I know it was supposed to be sent back to the city, but I don't recall anything mentioned in the investment report of those two subject areas. Now, this weekend, it was announced that the city manager and possibly the mayor were aware of an audit report showing $260,000 revenue loss. Again, the mayor is part of the audit committee, so my only question for tonight is, can you explain if the mayor was aware of this dramatic loss of revenue before or after the elections that occurred on May 4th, 2024?
Counsel, is there anything anyone would like to say? Any comments?
Madam, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have a question. The gentleman that mentioned about the prayer, my understanding is that it is open to volunteers, and if there are no volunteers, then you ask who might be present. Is that typically how that is handled?
Ma'am, as you know, you are correct. It's not about prayer. It's just about coming up, having a reason to complain and come at the council. Because we have opened this up to anybody that would like, any church that would like to speak.
That's right.
And I just want to do some clarity. As you know, I agree with Mr. Smith. The people have spoken, whether you like it or not, they have spoken, regardless if it's 20 or if it's 100. And to accuse the mayor of trying $200,000, that's slander, and it's a lie. It's a lie. I would never come up here, I would never tear somebody down to build myself up. I'm not going to lie on somebody because I don't have anything else to do with my life other than to show up here. And the second thing, Mr. Grady is neutral. He neutral. We do our audit. The mayor doesn't touch any money. Mr. Kagle runs the daily operation of the city. The council does not touch any money. Our executive directors do that. So please, please stop trying to slander our name, assassinate our character. The election is over. Madam Secretary, we can move on.
I did have one thing to contribute.
Please, Councilmember Boyd.
I just wanted to note that the city of Colleen is the second fastest, make sure I can be very good. I just wanted to note that the city of Colleen is the second fastest-growing city in the United States. I'd like for us to fact-check that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd had the floor. We want to move on and be professional with this meeting. I know y'all on edge, you want to show out tonight, I got it, but you need to respect the people that's, Mr. Price, that is your first one. That is your last one. So please respect the council and the people that are up here speaking, because when you're speaking, we're going to respect you. Madam President, I mean, Madam Secretary.
Consent agenda. MN 24012, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 14, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. MN 24013, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 14, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. MN 24014, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 14, 2024. RS 24092, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment report for the quarter ended March 31st, 2024. RS 24093, consider a memorandum resolution selecting group employee medical and pharmaceutical benefits with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas effective October 1st, 2024. RS 24094, consider a memorandum resolution approving a ground lease agreement at Skylark Field Airport with Aeroserve LLC. RS 24095, consider a memorandum resolution approving addendum number eight to American Airlines lease agreement with the Colleen Regional Airport. RS 24096, consider a memorandum resolution approving change order number two and change order number three to the corporate hangar Phase II contract with NASCO Inc. in the amount of $521,166.30. RS 24097, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for the corporate hangar Phase II additional parking at the Colleen Regional Airport in the amount of $96,800. RS 24098, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of a modular building to be used as office space for instructors at the Colleen Police Academy and Training Center from Box Modular in an amount of $178,764.20. RS 24099, consider a memorandum resolution purchasing a replacement golf course irrigation control panel through Pump Mechanical Technical Services LLC in an amount of $86,169. RS 24100, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Pipeline Analysis LLC for sanitary sewer evaluation survey Phase One in an amount of $628,292.47. RS 24101, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement for the purchase and installation of equipment in an amount not to exceed $1,113,848 and a contract amendment for software support and hosting services in the amount of $107,158 with Aqua Metric Sales Company for Phase II of the water meter replacement program. RS 24102, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2435 Airport Pump Station Update Project to SSP Industries LP with a contract in the amount of $1,215,097. OR 24006, consider an ordinance amending chapters 2, 4, 11, 15, 17, 18, 20, 22, 26, 28, 30, 31, and 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas to repeal certain fee provisions. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending chapters 2, 4, 11, 15, 17, 18, 20, 22, 26, 28, 30, 31, and 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas to repeal fee provisions, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? You can't see it up there because Adams is there. Can someone raise their hand? Councilmember Solomon.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Raise your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 6. Counsel, okay, motion, prove seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're in. Public hearing, counsel, you have three minutes to speak. Three times each. Madam Secretary.
PH 24018, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Lincoln Horse Properties, Texas LLC, case number Z 2409, to rezone Lot 11, Block 5, Marlboro Heights, revised from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 905 Highland Avenue, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Colleen by amending the zoning of the property locally addressed as 4810 Clear Creek Road, Colleen, Texas, to change the zoning of Lot 11, Block 5, Marlboro Heights, revised from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Reva presented the slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through it? All right, with that being said, is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak? Okay. We will open up public hearing.
Just a quick note, it's Day 248 for the 120 hostages held by the Palestinian terrorists with eight American families also involved in that hostage situation.
Mr. Price, please stay on the agenda.
Was a note. So for PH 24-08, do I have your attention, Madam Mayor? What's the lookout for the rent increase on this? 024-09, are these independent or are they all together? Ms. Mayor, can you explain?
Sir, you signed up for public hearing.
Right. Are they all together or are they individual? Simple question.
They're individual, sir. They're individuals.
Okay. That's all I ask. So that's my question.
Before you sign up in the future, ask the question.
Why are you so hostile?
Sir, you come up here every Tuesday.
Are you hostile?
And you do the same thing. Please get to your point.
You don't need to hate me.
Now we want to throw that out. Would you please get to your point?
I'm not throwing it out. I'm deserving your hate.
Sir, get on the agenda or take a seat.
I asked a question.
Ma'am, as you know.
I believe, Madam Mayor, you did confirm that these are two separate items. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. He's here every Tuesday. He knows that. Continue, sir.
Okay, so, to my confusion, right, that I'm not allowed to have, right? I'm just wondering what the rent and if it involves utilizing Section 8 housing.
We're going to keep this one short and sweet for you, just like me. We needed to lighten the mood a little bit. I don't agree... I don't agree with rezoning this into duplexes strictly for this reason. Marlboro Heights has a very important historical significance to the city of Colleen. Incremental change is not something that we should be doing in a historic area. We're not incrementally going in and saying intentionally, we want to get rid of everything in historic downtown, the overlay district that is on the national registry of historic locations. So why would we go in and change Marlboro Heights' character and nature and invite incremental change into there? The residents who live there don't typically come out. We have a lot of elderly people that live in none of media area, but in speaking some duplexes and multifamily homes is not what they're looking for.
Public hearing closed. Counsel, you have any comments? If not, can I get a motion? Uh, Councilmember Boyd.
I did review this, and if I'm not mistaken, this is an existing two-family. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And with Colleen ranking as the second fastest growing city in the country, according to a countrywide survey by U.S. News and World Report, I do think this is important. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon, you making a motion to approve?
Yes.
PH 24-018.
Yes, I'm making a motion to approve...
I second.
Well, we're waiting on this motion. I'll come to you next, counsel.
I'm sorry. I was there and...
Yes, sir. So it's PH-24-018?
Yes.
Is that a motion to approve?
I do. I make a motion to approve PH-...
24-018.
24-018.
Thank you. Counsel, all in my mind, cop.
I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. You raise your hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24019, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance, case number Z 2410, to rezone Lot 2, Block 2, Julius Alexander Industrial, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 408 Liberty Street, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot 2, Block 2, Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revaire went through these slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through the slide? All right. With that being said, is the applicant here?
It's us.
Nope, we don't want to speak. All right. Public hearing. Mr. Sean Price.
Same question that nobody answered that I had on the other one. I have on this one. So what's the outcome of this? How does it increase the rent, right, for that location? Right? Does it make it unfeasible for somebody in the lower income range? Because right now, it's lower income. Now you're going to get it and add it. Is this going to increase the rent? And/or is it going to add to Section 8 housing? Those are two simple, basic questions that nobody wants to answer. Somebody needs to know something about it. So that's just my basic question. Thank you.
Mr. Price, this is a vacant lot.
Mr. Price, public hearing is closed. Counsel, what is your opinion? Can I get a motion? Uh, Councilmember Alvarez, second. Mayor Protem, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Adams?
Madam Mayor?
I had a statement real quick, but go ahead.
Who made the motion?
Alvarez, and it was seconded by Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
So all in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
I had...
I'm sorry.
I had something.
Oh, okay. Would you scoot back? I couldn't see you.
Okay. I had the little emotion thing on there.
Yes, sir.
Oh, if I'm... Correct me if I'm wrong. This is the site for our transition housing?
Yes, sir. It's vacant.
Yeah, and when it's built, it won't be any rent.
No, sir.
Thank you. And I want to just point out for the public that the city doesn't... can't get involved in rent. We don't do rent control in Texas. So we can't set rent rates or force people to do public housing for Section 8. That's between the landlord and the tenant.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24020, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to fencing materials regulations. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City of Colleen..." Excuse me. "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to the city's fencing materials regulations, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, providing for publication and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Revaire presented the slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through them? All right. Public hearing open. Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion? Okay. Councilmember Alvarez made the motion. Councilmember Boyd seconded the motion to approve PH-24-020. Any discussion? All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, next item.
PH 24...
Standby. Oh, Mr. Price, I apologize. You know, you signed up for everything. Did we vote on that already? Mr. Price, I apologize. But you can come up here. It's not an open hearing. You're just talking. Sorry about that.
I know I'm not liked. I know the city council is hostile to me.
He signed up for everything. Mr. Price, please, just go ahead on.
I understand the hate. So my thing is, is that with the dark skies that we got coming on, right, with the city ordinance that we have the dark skies, we're lessening the light, right? We can't have that light trespass or anything like this. So we're lowering the light, and then we're saying that fences can't use barbed wire on the top, can't use razor wire on the top, can't sit there and defend your property because they've got to be four feet in the front and no more than eight feet along the back edge and along the back of the house, but you've got to have them capped. You can't have any security device to your fence, right? Just this weekend, had a guy run across my yard, running from the police, trying to evade the police, right? So now, I got to do something else with the fence in the front of my property to evade the criminal activity that's going to go on. My area is already high crime. I already get vagrants and so forth invading my property, and I got a low fence. So I utilize barbed wire on the top of it to keep them from climbing over the fence. Now I can't do that according to this. I can't defend myself. I can't defend my property as static as I possibly can without going out and using guns and knives and bats and everything else. Because despite the awesome work that the chief has done in my neighborhood, they're still four minutes away. That four minutes is life or death. So y'all need to think about this a little bit better. A little bit more attention needs to be applied. I know it doesn't matter now because you already voted it in and we got to do whatever, but there's no amendment or grandfather clause in this either. That wouldn't look bad.
Yes, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question was asked by myself during the last meeting if existing homes would be grandfathered into this ordinance, and the answer was yes. So that's on the record. The second thing, if you're zoner agriculture, agricultural, and I believe there's another zoning, this is still permitted, and rightfully so if you have animals and you're in the further portion of the city. What we don't want is to be in our highly residential areas and have barbed wire, you know, in and out different areas of different homes. It's not appealing, it's dangerous, and it's not common in most of your cities across the United States. That's all I got, thank you.
Any more comments? Madam Secretary.
PH 24021, hold a public hearing and consider a memorandum resolution approving the proposed fee schedule for FY 2025 to be effective October 1st, 2024.
Counsel, Mrs. Drake went through the slides last week. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? No, no, no.
I know.
No, ma'am. Thank you. Public hearing. Mr. Fornino.
With regard to these remarks, I'll help to... Actually, I think I can assist you all on the council. For those in the room that don't know, whatever's on the agenda, like the item that I'm about to speak, grabbing a form over there to see what tonight's agenda is not the way to prepare. The city takes time to put it out online. There's an agenda packet. Do your research before you come up here. If there's a question I have, many times I've come up here and said, "I don't understand this, and I'm not going to get out past my skis and all that." Rather than, you know, waste time and all the nonsense back and forth. I have my reservations with the council and vice versa, but I try to come as prepared in this form as possible. With regard to these fees, okay, fees go up incrementally. I get it. I remember 86 cents a gallon for gasoline. However, with all these fees going up, I mean, people spend money where they earn it. This ties to it. Once again, lack of foresight, not just this council, but many iterations that keep on with the same idea or general idea. Fees wouldn't be so restrictive or needed. I know a tax when I see one. This is just taxes repackaged under a different thing. And constantly, here's a conundrum and the dichotomy of, well, we have disabled veterans that aren't paying their fair share. I earned that fair share and that tax break. Many people in this town and in this room say, oh, well, we're disproportionately having to offset due to disabled veterans. All right? I'm going to be as correct, but I'm going to be as polite as possible about this. When it comes to that, I woke up with an appendage of myself this morning harder than anything any of you have ever done, generally speaking, right? I use correct terminology. I'm being polite because this fee... This is just a penalty. Do you want me to spell it out? I was trying to be polite and use a vocabulary.
Mr. Fornino, please, just...
Well, if you're not following along, like I said, I'm trying to be polite but also trying to demonstrate a point.
Mr. Fornino, please, continue.
I am, if you would let me. We do this all the time. These fees, people spend money where they earn money. Where's your earn money in this town unless you work for the city, a hospital, or a four cavazos? I defy you. Name me three companies that you can hire to retire here. If we had more activity, you can ask any Jewish businessman up in New York, how do you get away with charging so little? They make it up in volume. I'm sorry, Mr. Kegel, that confused look on your face that you've had most of this evening. That's how business actually works. You encourage people to repeat, not pay an exorbitant one-time fee for something at the point of a gun or a knife or with a court order. Maybe if you got outside your own zip code once in a while and actually took...
Court order. Madam Mayor, he's not focused on the agenda. He's trying to verbally attack the city manager.
Mr. Fornino, please, stop attacking the city manager, get back on the agenda.
Well, nobody here ever seems to want to answer questions, and I'm being polite about it, and you know I'm prepared. I would type all this up in emails, but what do I get back? Thanks for your email. Yours in service. I'm not going to engage with you at any point in time or whatever, and that counts as my engagement. Stop harassing me. Your questions are harassing. How dare you hold me accountable? All right? This is the time and the place. These fees are exorbitant overall. They're not going to engender people to want to come to Colleen and take advantage of services or live here because of these fees. I don't know what you folks are trying to create, but the Colleen you think you live in is not the Colleen that most of us do.
The growth of this council a couple of years ago was my money, my property, my choice. It's not our job to tell people how the city is supposed to look, and that's exactly what we're doing now. Fee increases, increasing the euthanasia cost will just lead to more sick strays that the city is ultimately going to have to pay for. Our euthanasia rate has increased year over year for the past couple of years, meaning that more of that cost burden is put on the city. What portion of this increase is to offset the increased costs that the city has to pay for euthanasia since we're not getting the Petco grant anymore because we didn't use it for Spain and neuter? We use it for whatever. Increase in golf rates last time lost as members, and this is not going to help keep an enterprise fund and its associated CIPs afloat when more people stop using our course. We actually, by the way, just in 2020, put a couple hundred thousand dollars into the irrigation system of the golf course. Assemblies, parties, events, parades, amusement, all bring people into Colleen. So now we're going to put a cost. Thank you for the respect of listening. Now we're going to put a cost on bringing in entertainment to our city, which will discourage it because I can go to a bunch of surrounding cities, and not only will they not charge me the permit fee, they will pay you to help with advertising for it. So do we want all of the events and the festivals going to Copper's Cove and Harker Heights and Louisville like they are now and have more of them leave the city of Colleen? Because when you put these fees on, that's what you're going to do. When it comes to our rental rates for rooms, they're too high already with too little services. A la carte pricing makes the city far less affordable than private venues in the open area or that are open in the area. Seniors at the Rosa Hartford Center, according to this fee chart, will either have to pay their recreation membership or apparently be limited to certain rooms in their building because quite distinctly, when these renovations for the multi-generational building came around, it was in no uncertain terms told to the senior advisory board that I was sitting on at the time that this is the senior citizens' building. So now we're going to charge them a fee to be part of the rec center in their building, and I don't know the logistics of how you do that. The biggest concern for citizens, and I did this myself, I asked people, I put it out on social media, I sought their responses, I didn't wait for the newspaper, the biggest concern that they had with the fee increases come in bulk pickup and the extra same-day pickup. So bulk pickup is going from $23 to $45, and then the same day is going from $0 to $75. Now I know that there is a very rational explanation for having to charge some money to come back the same day. I've talked about this with the staff. Also, I've explained it to citizens, but there's a sticker shock that comes along with it. Last year, the city council decided to reduce the amount of increases to developer fees because of the sticker shock. because of the sticker shock. Excuse me, can we give our residents that same ability to have this gradually phased in? And finally, just to get ahead of it, we are not some cities.
Thank you, your time, Ms. Sean Price.
We are not the second fastest, correct?
So, just to be clear, we're on 021? Is that correct, Mayor?
Mr. Price, you're on 021.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, yeah, I'm pretty much echoing Mrs. Brown here within Mr. Fornino on these raising, raising these rates. I'm just wondering, did anybody take an, take an approach to try to reduce the rates? To flatten the rates? You know what I'm saying? Because it's always seeming like we're spending more money. We keep spending, we keep spending, we keep spending, right? And if you go and look at the data, right, currently for this fiscal year so far, one hundred and forty-nine million, according to the, right, here to the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending 2023, the outstanding debt, right? Total outstanding debt right now for 2023 at the governmental activities is one hundred ninety-four point five million dollars, with the business-type activity at forty-nine point one million dollars, right? Which is a total of two hundred and forty-three point six million dollars in debt as a city. I get that we got to raise revenue and things like this, but I kind of like to utilize a little bit of the Reagan theory where if you lower it, then you get more, you spur more activity so you get more spend. You know what I'm saying? So, that's, I, I, I think that a more business approach, instead of just filling the gap approach, as well as controlling the spending of what we're buying and be more frugal. Because like I said, for the golf course, y'all want to spend eighty-six thousand dollars for, for an item that I, I found for sixteen thousand dollars, brand new. Now, I understand that there's a little adaptability in there, might cost a little bit more to adapt it because it's one system versus another. I understand all those complications, but that should be made. But there are differences in prices for certain things that we've bought as a city, and I think that that approach should be utilized here, because these increased fees, especially for those that are retired or in retirement centers, there's not a lot of money in their pockets, just like the rest of us, because cost has gone up. Remember, inflation will affect us. We will get more and more inflation this year and next year. So all these rates are going to hurt the city and, or the citizens of the city. I just would like for you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez made a motion to approve PH-24-021. Second, Councilmember Solomon, any questions, discussion? All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Oh, we got, oh, this is one, two, three? All right. The motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, our last item, whenever you're ready.
PH 24-022, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Chapter 30, Water, Sewers, and Sewage Disposal, to amend residential volumetric and commercial water rates. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 30, Water, Sewers, and Sewage Disposal, Article 5 of the Colleen Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas, by amending residential volumetric and commercial water rates, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for severability clause, providing for savings clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mr. Reynolds went through his slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through the slides? Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We'll open up our public hearing. Melissa Brown.
So the citizens did speak, apparently, but they, regardless of who anyone voted for, you still represent all of us.
Please stay on the agenda.
I am on the agenda because you have gone off on the same route a hundred times tonight.
Point of order, that's not on the agenda. We're going to ask you to stay on the agenda.
Please stay on the agenda.
If you would stop being hypocritical and listen, you'll understand I'm on the agenda because last week you weren't listening to us.
I wasn't even here last week, so I don't know what happened.
You haven't listened to us this week.
The point is, Ms. Brown. Counsel, we taking the five-minute, Ms. Brown, get herself together.
My stuff is together, I'm not the one that's yelling over people.
The meeting is now called to order. We have four councilmembers. Madam Secretary, there was, I think, a minute and twenty-some seconds left?
Uh, no, there was three minutes and forty-five seconds left. Thank you.
I have three minutes and twenty-seven seconds, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, right.
Start the clock, please.
The mayor ate up about forty seconds of my time, so. Just came up and talked about fees, and apparently no one listened because not a single question that was asked was answered or reiterated back to staff. So, and this is where I was going, y'all are voted to represent all of us. Last week, it was asked about sales tax revenue, and this is related, if you hear me out. And I have been trying to tell this council for years how we go about that. Part of that is in increasing our industry, our commercial, our business, not just retail, because retail only goes so far. Well, now I'm telling you that increasing the water rates is bad for renters and it's bad for business. So let's see where we can find some money. Three hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars went from the water and sewer fund to KEDC this past year, and it's likely to increase the requested funding increase. It's not restricted to any uses, and they also paid for WCID's water survey, which is system-wide, so it covers everything outside of Colleen also. Now, the increased rates are only expected to bring in two hundred fifty thousand in additional revenue. Commercial rate increases will affect renters, and it will affect industry and businesses. To get ahead of it, we are not some cities. I was trying to get to this point. Some cities do have higher rates and more industry. We are Colleen, and those some cities, they have industry that's accessible to distribution rounds. They had, the fact that we are a city that is growing, not the second fastest in the country, but we are growing, and we still need to increase our fees and our rates as we're building faster than we can support. U.S. News and World Report is a, is a publication that you have to actually pay to be part of their surveys. They, they did a survey of a hundred and fifty cities that they studied and found out that those hundred and fifty in Colleen was the second fastest growing. In fact, New Braunfels, according to the census data, had five point eight-eight percent growth compared to Colleen's one point six-eight percent, and it didn't go down five point two percent from New Braunfels to Colleen. So we need to put everything into perspective. The perspective in Colleen is our poverty rate is higher than some cities. What you're doing is you're pushing out the low income and you're also discouraging industry and business from coming in. You want to fix the sales tax? Bring in industry, bring in distribution and logistics. You want to make it so it's affordable for people to rent? Stop increasing fees that are going to get tacked onto their rent. Details matter, folks. Details matter, and I told you it was related.
Michael Fornino.
Actually dovetailing to what, some of what Mrs. Brown had to say, we're talking about water rates, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's great and fine, that, that's going to be subject to change, but one thing that we don't discuss is we're charging how much, or talking about how much to charge for the water, whether business or residential. We don't seem to be addressing capacity. We just want to keep daisy chaining further up the map when it comes to water. Given enough time, we'll probably be daisy chained and connected to the Great Lakes. We're not concerned with capacity, storage. This, this past spring, I mean, in my time in Colleen, we have been graced, blessed with one of the wettest springs and summers that we've had. A lot of flooding, that's water that we could use. There's no, no thought seemed to be given to building for storage. Underground, maybe build a reservoir, all this farmland that we don't want to do anything but put R1 houses on? We could build a small reservoir just for us. California has just started to get that hint as to how to make use of the years where they do get an inundation and they have a surplus of water that they can go years without. But that's, that's basic planning and foresight. I mean, when, pardon me, when we look to other towns, again, we're talking about growth, okay? I will agree that we're not the fastest, but New Braunfels was brought up. New Braunfels, much like Waco, has some of the most famous water parks in the country. That's another thing that would bring things here, related to water. Do we have anything like that? No, let's build houses. Not anything that people want to actually come to Colleen for, but, again, the rates are one thing, but in the very near future, and I would say probably people at least half my age or younger in this town, water is going to start to become as valuable as gold. We're just building out too much and there's not enough capacity. Round Rock, Georgetown, Flugerville, Austin, didn't learn their lesson, and now they're, they're linked up with us for some of their water, but they keep growing. What do we do? We duplicate the experiment. So when it comes to the rates and all that, we could charge as much, as much as you want. You could put it down there, but that is not going to increase the capacity. That's a factor that nobody seems to want to address.
Sean Price.
So, I just had a great conversation with our manager for water, and he explained how it doesn't affect residents outside of multiple apartments for the water change in the businesses that are utilizing water. And now with the fifty car washes, now with restrictions, right? Those restrictions are going to be out there to save water, but the increased growth, right, doesn't mean the capacity, right? Is there any plans for dredging the lakes to hold more capacity to hold and sustain more water? I don't know. I haven't seen it in any of the plans from the Army Corps of Engineers or from the Texas Wildlife and Waterways Department, nor from the city, from the city council, although there, there is the one increase for the, the pump station there in, in, at Belton Lake for the upgrade, for the pumping. There is some capacity increase there, but that's just for moving, moving the water. We got water pressure issues in the city already, so I think that, a deep dive into looking at, okay, we're going to increase these rates, but we're not going to increase, you know, with that is the quality, because yesterday my water smelled like palm water. So I know, I know there's, it was explained, and it's just a cycle thing about spring and summer and so forth, and I get that, but with a superior water system and the new regulations now with PFTs being involved, that's an added increase. I got it. Is that part of this? So that's my question, is the, is the upgrading, is the reason why we're going to increase the cost for the PFTs, for the national water standards that are now being implied Nation One? So if that could be answered, I'd be grateful for your attention to that matter. Thank you.
Public hearing closed. Mr. Reynolds, could you come on, please? Because I heard a lot of misinformation. For the people that's at home, and also I see new faces in the audience, there was a lot of stuff that I know is incorrect. Could you please clean that all up before I give the floor over to Councilmember Cobb to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. As we addressed last week, the average residential customer would not see an increase in their rates. The increase on the residential side is only going to affect the volumetric rates for the top two tiers, the people that are using between fifteen thousand and one to thirty thousand gallons, and the people that use thirty thousand gallons and above. So those are only two tiers that would be affected with residential rates. Everybody else will see, will remain the same on the residential side.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. Councilwoman Cobb, you wanted to speak.
Good evening.
On an agenda item.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, and our constituents in the audience. So many times tonight, I've heard so many times that we're not listening. A quote of Barnes was used, you know, your, your land, your place, your home, you do what you want to do. If you think this council or this staff sit on a daily base, basis and do what they want to do, I got to tell you, you're, you're kind of incorrect. We know that I'm a probably, well, I'm not, I cannot speak in myself, but I'm probably the cheapest person it is in the city of Colleen. So when you get those facts and we get those numbers and we look at things, we're working at it. The staff, we go and we get the best that we can that's going to last with our numbers and with that budget. People are working hard, and as far as you saying that we're not listening to you, I listen. And the council, you see them listening, researching. Do you think we don't take notes? Well, yeah, notes are being taken, and we go and we try to find the best measure. Now, the, the things that are really, just really killing me lately is our disrespect, not just for each other, but for each other. Let me tell you, you can't, you cannot expect for us not to want our meetings to go...
Mr. Cochran, you cannot be interrupting her. That's your first one.
So we have to follow parliamentary procedures, and we do acknowledge you, but to be, but to you, Sander, come on, y'all, we don't have to do it. I'm sorry, we're being firm. Is my time up? My time is, it may be up, but let me tell you, we're fighting for you.
Council, Councilwoman Cobb.
We're fighting for the city. I'm sorry, I just had to say it, because I just feel like we just sit here and just get beat down.
She said you got eight seconds left.
Okay, let me finish.
Sorry, one minute left.
One minute left.
The beat down doesn't have to occur when you come with your facts. When you're saying good things, tonight we talked about prep. When prep, that, that was a good sense. That was, that was fair. But when we come up here with these imaginary ideas and think that we can make them happen, it's not going to happen that way. Inflation means what? If there's inflation that's going on, if the prices are going up, in order to meet the need of this city, then we have to raise our prices. We can't not just say, "Okay, we're going to go bankrupt, then we're going to have another issue." Inflation means price raising, and we're going to be very hospitable with those. So I, I'm just asking for us to be just a little more tolerant of each other when we come up here with information, that we have facts, that we know what we're saying, because I, I, I could care less about the Colleen Daily Herald fact checker as long as I know what's going on. I'm sorry, ma'am. I just, I can't do it.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Any more comments? Councilmember Segarra.
So I make a motion that we approve that last agenda item.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you.
I second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Segarra, second by Councilmember Solomon. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams? He's gone? Okay. Motion carries six to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we adjourn?
Second.
Solomon, Councilmember Solomon made the motion to adjourn, second by Councilmember Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Mean adjourn.